...business committee reports.
Motion made, accepting committee report by your second discussion. All those in favor? All right, the lie opposed, that carries.
Public property lays over to the November 13 meeting. Finance, we have three financial businesses from five meters, one hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars to the county general RPS, eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven, professional tech services, thirty-three thousand, four ninety-three, general office supplies, three thousand, from the account of care adults salary expense to care adults outside professionals, six thousand, four hundred, and available funds, twenty-eight thousand as allotted to community development by the DCR to fund a grant urban park construction challenge grant.
Counselor Trahan, is that a unanimous vote of the finance committee?
A unanimous vote of the committee.
Motion made. If there's no objection, we'll take them together. If anybody wants to take one individually, we'll do so. Motion made, seconded discussion.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just curious with regards to procedurally, we are putting this down to be adopted at the next meeting, correct? Or is this a push? Is this to approve today for expenditures to that law?
On the finance committee?
On the finance committee.
I believe, and attorney by talent can let me know, it becomes effective immediately, but on any emergency, it has to be subsequently adopted permanently.
Okay, well, on that, on that point, I would like to isolate the financial transfers for the parking department based on the fact that I have a January twentieth request from this year, an October twelve request this year, in particular, one salary expenditure that has seemed to have increased two thousand dollars between January and October.
Why don't we do this, well, if we can do a friendly amendment, Counselor Trahan, to eliminate that from your motion, we'll vote on the other items and then we'll come back to Counselor Cahill and what happened to the other item. Thank you. Okay. As amended, Counselor Trahan, for your second discussion on the other items, including Counselor Cahill's issue, roll call.
So this will just be for the available funds community development, right?
All the non-parking related issues.
Right, right, okay. Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci? Absinthe, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ned?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bailey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
And was there emergency on that, Counselor Trahan?
Yeah.
Motion made, for your second, the emergency, roll call, please.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Absinthe, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ned?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bailey?
Yes.
Counselor Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, I don't, I would make a motion to table that expenditure.
And would you be like to, we can invite the parking department up at the next meeting to address that or subsequent meeting? Mr. Fenton would like that. Motion made, table, for your second, second discussion, roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Absinthe, Counselor Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ned?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bailey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
New business. Counselor Creighton.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to set down for a public hearing at the next council meeting of the whole, a bond bill of four million dollars relative to municipal infrastructure improvements.
I believe that was tabled at the last meeting, Counselor, our attorney by talent. Well, it's not what the proper form of motion should be.
My recollection was that was tabled, it was a motion to table essentially the same motion that you're making right now.
Would that have to be for us to remove from the table?
Yes.
But if I may, Mr. President, I believe Counselor Cahill's motion that was tabled at the last council hearing was specific to have it set down on the agenda, to replace on the agenda to be set down at this current public hearing. So I feel as if we were to move that off the table, it would be impossible to have it on the agenda for this council hearing. It was more or less a thing of logistics and control. Because Counselor Cahill was so specific with his motion.
Turn your heads up.
I think you're splitting hands. I think the motion to table essentially was, was to set down for a public hearing. I think your motion now is to set down for a public hearing. I think it's tabled.
So would the proper form of motion be to remove it from the table?
I, I think for clear record and for, for the proper way to do it, that would make the most sense, yes.
Counselor would like to make your motion.
Yes, I would, Mr. President. I would like to move from the table Counselor Cahill's motion to set down for public hearing, fully and all, for municipal infrastructure.
So your second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Seer.
I'm gonna try.
Thank you, Counselor Seer.
And I really don't see any reason to take it off the table from the one to number two. At the here at the gleam, as well as my government, a week ago, there's a lot for us to consider here. And, and, you know, I said it last week, and I'm not gonna say any names, because that's what my desk is going to be last night, but, you know, I, I can see there's some good in that, but there's a lot of things in there that, that I don't think are good. And I also feel as though Counselor President has already said publicly that he is not going to put this down on the agenda. And by taking it off the table and trying to get it put down for a hearing, it's saying that the Counselor President's word is no good. And one of the reasons why I voted for him to be the Counselor President is because I've always seen, experienced his word to be good, for him to try his best to keep the council together on a lot of issues. I believe he, Counselor Calucci, and I said I was gonna name any names, but he, he tabled it because you could see that there are a lot of counselors who still have a lot of issues and a lot of concerns about this four million dollar bond. I believe it didn't go through the proper channels to get it to the council for a public hearing, should've went through the ways and means and then been brought out to them. I'm gonna encourage my fellow counselors not to take it off the table.
Counselor Creighton.
Mr. President, through you to the members, I would like to just remind my fellow counselors that this is a motion to set down for a public hearing. This is not a debate about the bond, the merits of the bond, it's a debate about the process. I would like to see, I think this is unprecedented, not to have something set down for a public hearing, I would like to see a vote yes for the man.
Technically, the vote is to remove it from the table, just, no, that's okay. I don't want to split, yes. Counselor Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I understand that this is a contentious issue, and I appreciate that it's a contentious issue. This is why we're elected to debate such issues. And I do concur with my, my fellow counselor from Ward Five stating that this is essentially a procedural move to put it down for us to have further discussions. Times of the interest rates are low, we'd like to try to get a bond moving so we can properly have it placed by the spring, contractors that can do some of this work. We've heard from Dr. Latham, we've heard from Mike Donovan, there are significant repairs needed to be done in the schools. I'm proud of the fact that we had voted for a budget that has 1.715 million towards capital improvements to the schools, that is, that is underway as we speak. It's tremendous amount of money that we, that we would need to bond in order to fix up all our schools. And in listening to the presentation today from Dr. Bluestone, from what I've heard, is that Lynn should start thinking big, that our parks are important, that our economic centers are important to invest, to invest in, and that we can have good parks, quality auditorium, high internet, speed internet, and proper servers for our city governments to be able to function properly, which is now at issue. And along with this, we can have all of that. I think the mayor's done a tremendous job of making sure that we have a rainy day fund. Just recently in the news, you look at the city of Worcester, where it saves the last five years, has not bonded anything, their, their credit rating has improved, and they've gone on for a bond this year, seventy-seven million dollar bond. And then you look at, recently in the paper, as of today, the financial problems limited Saugus' ability to deal with park problems. This was in the Daily Item, this is because it is difficult to make the financial obligation to make sure that your parks are up to snuff, that you have quality of life issues, because there are so many problems with aging infrastructure in cities like Lynn. So I think we can think big, I think time is really important here. We put this down in November, we debated it in December, there's no coincidence that we're also debating the tax rate at that time. So I would suggest that there, I don't see the benefit to the city or the taxpayers to wait where interest rates currently are low, and we can have a long discussion of whether or not any type of bonding is, is beneficial to the taxpayers, but I can say that we have done this before. In 2005, we did a four million dollar bond for, for Manning Field, and then we turned around the next year and put out to the voters, eleven million dollar bond for the improvement of schools, and the voters, you know, the voters voted it in. I think this is pressing for it, I think we can have both. I really want both of our all pushing for all those things, and in order to implement a lot of the things that this, the study has suggested is, I think we should start taking big and taking these both out. So I hope you do vote to take it off the table, I would appreciate the procedural process and allow us to have it on substantive debate in November, where we're not debating other very, very important issues.
Counselor Lozey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very disappointed in how this has come about and where we're at in this, and I have to say that I'm opposed to even coming to this point, that we're trying to bring this to even a public hearing. Many of the proposed expenditures on this spreadsheet, this one-page spreadsheet that was given to us back in, I think, August, many of them can be covered on the state and federal grants. We have a grant writer, and no attempt, no committee review, no input, I know my colleague, Counselor Seer, was upset that he felt he wasn't consulted with sufficiently, or rather than just a phone call and a one-page notification. I, I feel the same way, my sentiment is exactly like Counselor Seer, and I think a few other counselors on this board, on this council. I, I don't believe that, in my ten years as a counselor, we've had two four million dollar bonds. One was for Manning Field, and I'm glad I voted for that because we have the finest high school facility in the state, and I think that money was put to good use. The second one was for the high tension wires. That passed, we successfully had that removed, and I even believe that it was done for a million less than what we voted to bond, and I think that was a good move that goes hand in hand with Dr. Bluestone's presentation. I think that's our hurdle crescent right here in Lynn, along that lineway, that waterfront. This four million dollar bond, or i.e. tax increase, in my opinion, we've had little to no discussion on it, and I don't think that we should be moving to a public hearing when we haven't even been consulted on it, we haven't even, the spreadsheet has numbers on it for parks that there have been no estimates given. When I spoke with the DPW, there was no discussion with them, or little discussion with them, no estimates were given. This seems like a, I'm sorry, the proposal is just too, in the beginning stages, I mean, I think we're all a hundred percent in agreement, we want to beautify our city, we want to improve the parks. I feel as a, as a ward counselor, that's one of the most important priorities, and I've made it a priority as a counselor. We have a new Gowdy Park, we have a new Flax Farm Park. Fortunately, I don't know the exact number of years, four or five years ago, we got a new basketball court at Lynn Woods Park. The last park in Ward One, Magnolia Park, doesn't qualify for any federal or state grants. And, you know, whereas most of the city, seventy-five, eighty percent of the city does qualify for these state and federal grants. My, my council colleague, Dan Cahill, mentioned, we have a rainy day fund, and I think that, you know, we ought to look at that. We need to have more and better information, we need to sit down with the right people, with J.B. Marsh and community development, with the recreational people in the DPW, we need to have a better idea of what this is gonna cost us. The other, the last point I'd like to make is that I think, given what we heard tonight earlier with our superintendent, Dr. Latham, laying out some, just part of the expenses that we're facing here in the city of Lynn, which is an important component, and the cognitive mapping that Dr. Bluestone laid out, perception, we need good schools, there are priorities, public safety, and, you know, I think that this bond, which is a, i.e. a tax increase, is just the timing is not right here. And I think we need to be more specific, and there needs to be a more comprehensive review, and my last point is, I think we need to let the voters decide. I think there's more than just four billion, and I think that four million dollar number is an arbitrary number that was used so that we can, we can avoid letting the voters decide. And I think it needs more than four billion dollars to accomplish what we can all agree on that needs to be done, that should be decided by the voter. So, in that context, I can't support holding a public hearing for this four million dollar bond tax increase. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just think this bond, right now, after listening to Dr. Latham, is totally irresponsible. To put this tax burden on our taxpayers, we just sat here and listened tonight about possibly after tomorrow, between fifteen and twenty million dollars for this school, it is just totally irresponsible. Counselor Lozey said it, and Counselor Seer talked about it, we have grant writers, J.B. Marsh, all of them, they all, they always find us funding for playgrounds, I mean, there are two things on there that are important, the stairs for City Hall, things that are important, public safety, but it's just right now, this school has to be at number one focus. That's what keeps people in our city, is most important to us as parents, is our education for our, for our children. That has to become number one. And it, it just, it just doesn't make any sense, it's just the wrong time for us, it's just another tax on the people, and the economy's not right for it, it's just a bad time. This school comes once in a lifetime, it's here, we're number one on the list in the state, we need to jump on this, we need to take advantage of this, and we're gonna need to come up with that fifteen to twenty million, they're just gonna pass this by and run to the next city. So that has to be up my armpit. I mean, there is a lot of good things in this, but it's just bad time, I just think it's a bad time.
Counselor Seer.
Thank you. I agree with public counselors Lozey and Trahan, but also something that Counselor Cahill said, I agree with procedure, and there is a procedure deployed against school public hearing, that's through the ways and means, which is a committee, so that they can sit and go back and forth with what should be on that list and what shouldn't be on that list. You know, in, in April is when the deadline is for us to come up with a location and then pick a site, what we're gonna do for, for that school, and then again, we're gonna be going back to the voters in, by July or August for another one. So I agree, it is a tax increase, there are some good things in there, you know, we do need to repair the marina, we do need to repair the steps in City Hall, we also do need air conditioner in the auditorium, you know, but I'm not saying this, that we don't need another flight pole, but we don't need another flight pole right now, and we gotta spend fifteen to twenty million dollars on, on just one school, that's not including the 1.5 we gotta come up with for over at Glass Oak, lot of two-techs roof, and I understand some of that's gonna be funded to the state, but some of it isn't, we're gonna have to come up with that difference. So I'm just saying that we should slow down, that we shouldn't take this off the table, I think it should still stay or remain on the table.
I'll go for it, Counselor Capano. Counselor Capano.
Yeah, we're already debating now, so why don't we just put it down for a public hearing? I mean, it's not even a public hearing yet, we're already debating, these are just the, the arguments that will come up in the public hearing. Maybe we won't do it, maybe we will. I mean, Counselor Lozey, you've done a good job, you've got a lot of parks done up in Ward One with state grants, but I've got infrastructure falling apart in Ward Six, I got parks that are in bad shape, I may wanna have a chance to look at what, you know, what the proposals are. I mean, I, I don't see what the big deal is to discuss it, we're here to discuss it, where, and where we just had a report from Mike Donovan, we had a report from the superintendent, this would fit right in, and we could have that whole discussion, there is no reason why we, we can't have that discussion, and, you know, I, I have, I think the Counsel President, to just take off of what Counsel Seer said, has done a good job at setting down public hearings, but there's all, there's obvious pressure here not to set this down. I mean, there are counselors saying that we shouldn't do it at all, so, you know, I can understand, you know, wanting to, to set it down right now, it just makes sense, we, we can discuss it here and we can vote on it. If it goes down, it goes down, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Counselor Creighton.
Mr. President, Counselor Capano took a lot of votes instead of saying, but we're just, we're debating along at the exact same moment that we're debating whether or not to set down the debate. It's just getting a little bit, if you want to debate it, vote yes to take it off the table, vote yes to set it down for a public hearing, and then we'll debate.
Counselor Seer.
This is more of a question, I don't know, if we did take it off the table, there's specifics that are in that bond, you know, I, I don't think it's ready for, for a public hearing, that's why I'm saying, what I'm saying, and I agree with what Counselor Capano said, there are counselors who are opposed to it, but there's also counselors who are in favor, so you can take either side of it, and say we're gonna do one, is a procedure that we usually vote for, and that's through a committee, and it hasn't gone through a committee, so that, that they can have a say, and it can come out here on the table. That's all I'm saying, it's a procedure, and it's more than just about the bond right now, it's about that procedure, and it's the fact that the Counsel President has already said that he would put it on the agenda in November. There are still some issues that I have with that four million dollar bond that you're trying to put up there for a public hearing. I'm not gonna get four hundred thousand dollars for a park in my, in my, in my ward, all right, and, and it's fifty thousand dollars, I got three or four schools that are dilapidated, falling apart, they pay up fences around, because the bricks are falling off the building, they need windows, and they need roofs, and again, that's gonna...
I got schools, I got schools...
I understand that, I understand.
Coming in from the state to fix those schools, right?
I have a whole...
Yeah, schools fallen down, Tracy School fallen down, and we all have these problems, that's not the issue.
That is the issue.
Gentlemen, everyone can have...
Even that's the issue, there are other problems.
Counselor...
One hundred percent right here.
Counselor Seer.
At the time, it was in the city.
Please, we're gonna, everyone can have as much time as they want to talk on this issue, if we could just do it one at a time. Counselor Capano.
I, I'm just saying, I, I, you know, I wasn't through yet, and I have a...
We're gonna get right back to Counsel Seer. I appreciate your...
I'll go first, Counselor Seer, if you can come back, that's fine.
Counselor Capano.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying, we all have schools, you mentioned that, you know, you've got schools with bricks falling off the roof, I've had, we're at Tracy School almost closed, I'd like to see the Tracy School rebuilt, you know, I'd like to see more of it there, it's intact, I got a fence in the back of it intact that's fallen down, with, you know, homeless people go back and forth, you got three people hit from, you know, on the railroad track, I'd like that, I'd like that fixed too, there's problems all over the city, but that doesn't mean we have to ignore everything because we're focusing on a couple of things right now, there are, you know, we have an opportunity to lay a lot of things on the table and make a, a decision. We had a presentation by Mike Donovan, it's a great presentation, we had a presentation by the superintendent, why not have this, this presentate, you know, this debate, it fits right in with what we're trying to do, I don't, I don't see what the problem is. If, if the majority of counselors don't wanna do it, we will vote against it, I mean, it's not nothing that hasn't happened before, I, you know, I, I just don't see what the big deal is, I, I really don't.
Counselor Seer.
I agree with almost everything Counselor Capano said, there are a lot of issues in the city, and that's what my issue is with this bond, that it, it only addresses a few of them, all right, and it, as a wide counselor, who's trying to look out for the best interest of the voters in my ward, residents who live there, and I understand, that's what we're all trying to do.
We're all doing that, I think you do a great job, you do a great job at that, I, I don't have an issue with that, but we all have issues that we want addressed, but we want just, we just wanna have the opportunity to address them, that, that's all, I...
And I agree with you, we all have, and I have had the opportunity to address those issues that are in my ward, is what I'm saying, and that's why I'm saying, there is a procedure, there are committee areas, where it should go before it comes to the council, and it hasn't done that.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Counselor Fu, this is the question today.
First of all, I, Counselors, we have to go from the chair, we can't have a debate here between each other, this is needs to be better. I applaud Counselor Creighton for his work on this bond, I really do, I mean, the possibilities are endless, I can't see it being rushed over. The Counsel President agrees to bring it out in a couple of weeks, I'd be fine with that, I wanna look at some more things, I don't know, I agree with Counselor Seer, I don't know what's being bonded, what we have money for, I don't know what's being grant written, there's some, some things on the list, and I don't have the list with me, that, that may not be being paid for, I may wanna make my wish list a little bigger, I'm trying to keep it under four grand to keep everybody happy. I think it's a great idea that Counselor Creighton has, if it works into our, to our monies, I, I'd love to get some more of my parks fixed, and I, I have a big wish list in Ward Seven. There's just so much going on right now, I have no problem taking a couple of weeks to look this over, but I do applaud Counselor Creighton, you know, wanting to get this out there, I just wanted to look at what I need in my ward, should, when this debate comes up, that I would hope, but I think this is Counsel's point, thank you.
Counselor Barton.
Mr. President, call for the vote.
Any other discussion? If I may, I'd like to state one.
Mr. President, thank you, I'll, I'll try to be brief, again, this...
You, you do not have to repeat, and I know you're not going to any prior information we have on the...
Okay, this four million dollar bond tax increase hasn't been properly vetted, there's been arbitrary figures that were submitted with no real estimates, in my opinion, this will just be a Band-Aid effect, we all wanna have, improve our laws, we all want new fences, new walls, new infrastructure, but there's not been any real studies done, not, very few of the estimates have been done on that spreadsheet, and it's just gonna lead to more problems and disputes down the road, and it's not gonna be enough money to do what we all want. As Counselor Ford pointed out, he wants to get things in his ward, I can tell you a million dollars in Ward One, right now, out of the four million dollar bond, I think it's, the spreadsheet is fifty thousand, you know, it just, I, I can't support this at this time, I wanna, down the road, I'd like to see this thing properly vetted, have all the review and the estimates submitted, and vote through the proper channels. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Cahill, and I'd just like to state to the Counsel, I really would like to comply with Counselor Barton's advice. Counselor Cahill, floor draw.
I will be brief, quick, just to quantify this, we were told that four million dollar bond would be a seventeen dollar impact per average resident, seventeen dollars, even if you add in, and this is a very rudimentary math, hypothetically, seventeen million dollars is what we need hypothetically for a third of Marshall, we're talking anywhere between iron eighty-five to a hundred dollars per residence, even if you hypothetically live in a ward that is three times what the average salary is, we're talking about three hundred dollars per year, that's less than some, some families spend a month on cell phone services. So just to let you know, this isn't going to be this...
So just to let you know, this isn't going to be this avalanche just rate shock to the taxpayers. And again, it would be beautifying things throughout the city house. It would just be as, as an avalanche. And obviously, there's many differences between wards and outlarges. And as an outlarge, I can remind you of that, Counsel. I just warn everybody that when we start parsing off who's getting what, it gets, it gets, it gets a little bit dangerous. There are schools being built in some wards. There are roads being built in other wards. There are parks being, so when we start pointing, you're getting this and you're getting that, it, it's just going to unravel to the point where we're going to have a massive spreadsheet of everything, what every ward is getting. And it's not going to be happening. So I just warn that going down that road gets confusing for a lot of reasons.
Counsel Ford. Counsel-
Counsel Cahill, in my ward, three hundred dollars for household is not going to be accepted in if you don't pay your taxes actually. If you don't have a list of things you're getting in your ward, my people aren't going to, aren't going to support it. The city's not going to support it. If everything's going in one place, naturally, all the councils are going to want it.
But that's why we spread out, how, how it's spread.
Spread it one at a time. One at a time, please.
The way to spread right now, certainly, it's obvious it's not being committed to councils. So there's a lot of discussion to be won. To say that three hundred dollars means nothing to the taxpayer.
I didn't say that. I said hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
To, to the tax rate that pays three times the average. The average in your ward may be a hundred dollars, maybe eighty-five dollars.
Counsel Trahan.
Thank you. Well, I'd just like to say through the chair to Counselor Cahill that it's going to be more like three hundred dollars in our ward. And then we're going to go bond fifteen or twenty million more in less than a year. And then it's going to be up like another twelve hundred dollars.
That includes the school. That includes the school.
No, absolutely not.
I just told you that includes.
Absolutely not. Yes, no.
One at a time, please.
First up, it's not seventeen dollars.
One at a time.
It's seventeen dollars.
I have the chair.
If we can, if, at the next council meeting, we can have the CFO here to clarify any discrepancies on what type of tax increase somebody would have on whatever the council decides to do in the future. Counsel Trahan.
Thank you. Well, and, and talking to him last week, it was more like thirty-five dollars. So you're talking seventeen. I, I totally disagree.
He will fight on that.
I just want to carry on a little bit, but as we speak on what Counsel Lozey was saying, the money that was given, I mean, the way that the four million dollars was divided was terrible. It was terrible. He got fifty thousand, I got eight thousand. There's a ward in the city that got two-point-seven million dollars out of the four million. Totally, totally wrong. It wasn't, everybody should have got to even a moment if you're going to do this. If you're going to try to sell it, at least give everybody in their ward. And you're going to raise, everybody in your ward's taxes, at least give us all six, seven-hundred thousand dollars. We can justify the raise. And the people are all calling the house, screaming at us for the three-hundred-dollar increase. Not common what's going to happen when the school comes. It's just, it's totally out of hand. It's wrong. We shouldn't be putting this tax burden on the people right now until we see about the school. That has to be our number-one priority. I said it earlier, and I'll say it again. It needs to be our number-one priority. Schools and good education is what's going to keep our good families here and build this city back. I don't care what anybody says, it's the most important thing. And that's what we need to focus on.
Before I recognize the next counsel, I'm just going to ask each of you, when somebody else is speaking, please allow them to speak and complete their comments that they're making. Everybody here is very passionate about what they believe in, and everyone wants to do what's best for the city of Lynn. People may just have a different approach. So with your indulgence, Counsel Seer.
Thank you. I'm stating this to a couple of counselors. I have a fear. My fear is that if we do pass this bond, we do have this public hearing on. And whether it's ten bucks, a thousand bucks, it doesn't matter. It's raising the tax. And then we're going to go back again in a few months after we approve this and ask the voters to accept another bond, which is another tax increase. And as Counsel Trahan stated, the most important thing that we are faced with right now, I believe, are our schools. I know there are some issues in the parks and in the local city, but, uh, city-owned properties that, that are falling apart. I respect all of that. But I really do have a fear that if we don't pass this right now at this time, that the bond for the school will not come to us. And those other schools that we're talking about are in the pipeline. But the first school that we have to take care of is Marshall. And that's what I want.
Counsel Creighton.
Mr. President, through you and to the members, I'd like to close my box the same way I opened them, and state that this vote is not a voting bond. This is a vote set down for a public hearing. This is a vote for the democratic process. This was very likely a vote. I'd love to do it in an announced public hearing where we receive input from the public, the counselors could discuss it, and could make a decision. All these things are just great. Love to hear them. Love to hear them at the appropriate time, wanting to make this at a public hearing.
Counsel Capone.
I just want to emphasize that what Counsel Creighton just said, if you, every time I hear that we need to do a study, it just means you want to bury it, you know? You either got to vote for it or not. I, I mean, and as far as, you know, people in, in the ward calling you and complaining, I got people calling me in my ward complaining to me all the time. We repaired all, all the underground sewers and drainage systems and all. We separated the sewer from storm drains in the whole city. And we stopped when we got to West Lynn. We have flooding down there. We have, we never, we never separated that. We have flooding down there all the time. We have sewerage mixed in with the flutter. And what I'm getting now is a study, which means maybe ten years from now, they'll take care of it, take care of it. I can't get streets repaired because water and sewer, because they tell me water and sewer is going to be digging up the streets to separate the sewer lines from the storm drain lines. But they have no intention of ever doing it. I have people calling me every day that are paying water and sewer rates all the time for work on the rest of the city that was stopped in West Lynn. The infrastructure in West Lynn is falling apart. We had a truck that sank. It was on television because the sewer pipe collapsed. All I'm saying is, we all, you know, we, we have a chance here with this bond to maybe get some things done in parts of the city that haven't been done before. This isn't the time to debate that. But we, we already started the debate. Why not set this down and finish it off in a few weeks? I mean, I don't, I don't see what the, what the big deal is, especially where we're willing to talk about it right now.
Mr. President.
Counsel Cahill, I'll be brief. Just, I'd like to first clarify and then offer an ad word. One, just to be clear, I didn't say that three hundred dollars was an insignificant amount. I was quantifying that. And that's a worst-case scenario, but that's quantified. I'm not going to take a opinion on whether that's good or bad.